Well, welcome. And the silly season continues as we get into what I believe is at least on the same level as the selectmen's race, the school committee. The people who will dictate the policy of how our children are taken care of, six to eight hours a day. First of all, my hats off to everybody running, whether you're already a school committee member or you're standing up to say, "I want to help." We should applaud everybody who's willing to help our kids. But first, let's start with an introduction on a new candidate.
Well, it's my second go around. I did it last year, Al. I learned a lot and I wanted to come back and try it again.
And why don't you tell them your name?
My name is Scott Vikiola, born and raised in Milford, Mass. I'm the current chairman on the Vernon Grove Cemetery Board of Trustees. I've been a town meeting member for seven years. I was a farm electric constable. I think all that gives me a viable candidate for the job.
Well, Scott, I always start with a basic question. It'll be the one I start and end with. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, because I'd be fair. I get along with everybody and I'm a hard worker on everything I do. Doesn't matter what you do. You've got to be a hard worker. You've got to get along to get stuff done. You can't bicker at each other because the stuff won't get done. And I'll look at everything and make sure it's equal. And I won't cut if it doesn't need to be cut. And I'm for the kids. I don't have any kids, but there are kids. And all kids should have good education.
So if you look at the three biggest challenges that you think the schools face, what would you think would be the three biggest?
Well, one I've been seeing, I've been seeing a lot of kids have been leaving the school district, going to other schools for trade and what we have, Valley Tech, that does it anyway. But maybe we can get more trade programs in the school, like they got the hospitality. They had that. More stuff like that, more music programs. You've got to keep the kids here somehow. Number two, we've got the new superintendent now coming in. I like to work with him and see what he has for visions for down the road and finding a assistant superintendent. I would like to see one in the school district get promoted instead of going outside because I think it's time. We have somebody in our own system back ready. And three, probably Middle School East. See what you want to do with that. I would like to see it get saved for town offices, et cetera, because then you can free up more space up to high school for those programs you need down the road.
Now, there's always the debate. If you hire within, I mean, it always feels good that you're hiring your own.
It does.
But then people will turn around and say, "If you don't look outside, how do you know you've got the best candidate?"
True. You have to do both. Sometimes your best candidate could be within too, instead of going outside the box. But you have to go through all the process. That's the way it works and everything.
Well, I mean, if you have two candidates, both equal in skill, experience, whatever, one's Milford, one's not. I know the way I'd lean.
I would lean more to the, probably the Milford one.
Sure.
But you've got to give the outside candidate the shot too. If he's, if he has a better talk with you, you have to go that way.
And again, that's why I say if they're equal, you know, if there's a more qualified, better candidate from Alaska, well, okay, it's a more qualified, better candidate.
And you've got to take them.
But if they're even, even, hmm, I always, you know, my heart tugs on taking care of our own.
That's the way I go too.
Now, this year, we're a little worried. The state is looking at some pretty hefty deficits.
Yes, they are.
We've been fortunate that we've been able to hold our own. If the state cuts back on our local aid, now 62% of that cut would translate right to the schools.
Yes, it will.
Any ideas where you'd start looking to save money?
I know what. I think they're losing the grants for the kindergarten program. That's going to be going.
But that was, you know, the thing--
That was coming.
I don't want, sorry to interrupt, but if you think about it, that was the state. They said, "We're going to give you a grant to get started on all-day kindergarten."
Yeah, and I don't want to take--
Three years. But they said it's a three-year grant. Believe me, I'm not happy they take away any money. But when they tell you, "I'm giving you a three-year grant," the expectation is if you've got this thing going full speed, you're not going to stop it on year four.
No, you're not.
So when we got into this, I mean, I've been amazed when people act so surprised. "Oh, my God, they stopped giving us money on year four." And you sit there and say, "But it's a three-year grant."
They gave you the grant and you've got to put your money--
So you've got to turn around and say, "Either we're not going to accept the grant--
Oh, we are.
--or we are, and year four, we better have money put aside." So what kind of programs do you think you would look at? Because if something's got to be cut, where would you look?
You've got to do a study on everyone, see which ones aren't working out good, and the other ones you have to cut. It'd be hard because I know people look, but sometimes you have to cut. You have to cut if you have to cut.
Any programs you can think of specifically?
No, not my, not my firsthand. I've got to look, I would have to look at everything really good and see to make a decision that way. If you can find the money somehow to keep them, but sometimes you can't.
Well, that's always, if we can find that money tree that people talk about, you know, I'd like, I'd like to find the tree that has money in my front yard so I could do everything I want to, but--
Same here.
So far, I haven't found it.
I haven't either.
If it's there, somebody's getting to it before me. So you brought up Middle School East. Tell me what your thoughts are.
Well, I like the town to keep it, but rather you can make a hole in place in the downstairs cafeteria again if you have to. You can keep the gym because that's, you've got to keep the gym. They use it for basketball and everything else. I would like to see some of the town hall offices get moved in. Move all the offices out of the high school. And there's your trade space. You can bring in more trade again and work that way. But it's always a price though. We've got to see how much it will cost to do all that because it's an old building. Probably does need a lot of work.
Well, it's always just like the armory, you know, when you looked at it and we all knew it was going to cost us money.
Yep.
I don't think anybody thought it would cost us $5 million.
Nope, because they found stuff.
Of course.
As they will, that's a part of the process. You're not going to find stuff.
They're going to open up walls. They're going to do stuff.
You're going to find stuff you didn't think was there, and it was there. It was, they hide stuff.
Well, a lot of it is just, you know, over the years, just normal wear, tear, rotting. You know, I look at Middle School East and, I mean, obviously, people like me would say, "If I had a wish, is that somebody would come in and buy it, renovate it, make it worth a lot of money, and start paying a ton of taxes?" I just don't see that happening.
No.
You know, so you look and you, I mean, you hit it. Milford High opened in '74. I was in the first class there.
They haven't done no renovations since then.
There's not been any expansion.
That'd be a good time. You can try to do it. When you've got an empty school, it'll be soon.
But moving central office out of there--
That'd be a lot of work too.
But you'd get a lot of space.
Yes.
Community use, how many times we've heard Lenny Morcone, what a great program.
Yes, it is.
But he's in a bunker.
Yep.
And nobody would ever want you to reduce security, you know, and put the kids at risk. But you can't get to Lenny till 3 o'clock really. So having him move out certainly would be nice.
For you have more space. There's a lot of space in Middle School East though, a lot of space.
And then obviously, town hall, we haven't expanded town hall since Paul Revere put the doors on there.
And I know a lot of them over there. It's tight quarters, especially downstairs.
Well, the other thing too is people forget that it's going to cost us $300,000 or something to just keep Middle School East. Because you can't do like you did Stacy and just close the doors and seal it in.
No.
Because at that point, you're just condemning the building.
True.
So one way or another, the school committee, and I think a lot of people don't understand that the school committee pays 62%. Because we take, let's say we've got $100 of revenue. We pay all the things we have to pay. Health benefits, mortgages, you know, bonds we've taken out to build Stacy and Middle School East and all the Brookside renovations. Take all that out, and then what's left, school gets about 62% of it. So if we take $300,000 out or whatever it's going to cost to maintain Middle School East, well, school gets $200,000 less this year. Are you concerned about bringing Woodland on?
Eh, not really. I think it'd be a little, I think, once they start moving, it should be fine. It's a bit, there's a lot of money. You've got to make sure it runs properly because that's a lot of money the taxpayers paid for that town meeting. It's going to be a beautiful building. It was overdue. We needed it. Some people, "Oh, no, no, no." Like, well, the town's growing. More people moving in, you're going to need more room for kids. And this will solve for many years to come. There was time for a new school. That school needed a big facelift.
It was really ironic that we did the school busing because people made it seem like Woodland was the premier unbelievable school. And now, as it turns out, after renovating Memorial and, you know, putting a few classrooms in Memorial, renovating Brookside--
Brookside.
You're looking at Woodland and everybody was saying it was the worst elementary school at--
One that fell apart the worst out of the other two.
Well, I mean, they did some silly things. When I first went to Woodland and got on the council and found out that the landscaping was graded in--
It was on a swamp, basically, right?
But they, they did the grading so that when it rained, the water ran towards the building. To this day, I'm not an architect or a construction person, but I always thought you graded it so the water ran away from your building.
That's what I would have done.
And then you wonder why--
There's water in there, in the basement, and I'm like, "Ooh, that's not good."
You mentioned kids leaving. Big, big discussion is going on about school choice. Because for years, eh, we were close. Now, all of a sudden, 135, 150,000 round numbers are going out, not in.
Yeah, they're going to better schools, oh, for more.
Are they?
There's somebody who just wants to leave. Maybe they don't like it. Yeah, it's probably a lot of them, but they just can't cut it. That's probably how some of them look at it, but I don't, heck, you can't blame them. It's their choice if they want to go somewhere else.
But what would drive somebody to leave the Milford school system? Any ideas?
I don't know. Bullying, maybe? Bullying, probably is a part of it, I'm sure. There's still a lot of it up there.
It's always been.
It's always been through the years. Maybe they just don't want to be here. They just want a new outlook.
I've heard some people leave because they don't like the diversity that we have.
That's probably one, yeah. Probably maybe the biggest one.
Do you think it's legit?
Could be. I haven't, I haven't seen it because I don't, I'm not in there with the kids, but it probably is.
Yeah, but is it really the kids?
I don't know. Maybe the parents.
I was going to say--
It's probably a lot of the parents, but you can't blame them.
When you have a fourth grader leaving Milford, do I really believe the fourth grader came home and said, "I don't like this," or "I want to..."
No.
It's got to be the parents, at least for the majority.
Yeah, I can't blame them. That's their decision.
But what do you do to get them back? I mean, we keep letting 130, 150 grand go every year.
It's tough. More programs, if you can find ways to keep them in them. But it's hard sometimes. Times are changing too. You're more and more in the 21st century. I'm sure there's ways. I'm sure they're looking at it now. There's always ways. You've got to just keep looking.
Any idea what kind of programs you would think if they came to you and said, "Okay, we want to turn this around." What would you add?
Well, they've got a lot of music programs now. You'd always do more of that, but you've probably got a lot of that arts. If you can get trade, but I know years ago they had it, but it's hard when you've got other schools that have all that stuff. You've got to find something that's--
We're limited too because you couldn't, I mean, I've been concerned. Let me ask you your thoughts. The old days, when we were there, at least when I was there, if you were going to go to college, you stayed at Milford High. If you wanted to be a carpenter, a plumber, you know, people like my dad who academically, just not his thing. He's not going to go in and deal with calculus or organic chemistry. But you put a tool in his hand, he was Michelangelo. He was an artist. And I worry because to get into Blackstone Valley--
It's tougher now too.
You have to be in the top tier of the class.
Yeah, it's a lot tougher.
You know, so you turn around and say, "What do you do for a guy like my father?" You know, whether it's a boy or a girl, who's great with their hands. We used to call it book smart, you know, just not an academician. They're not going to be in the top 10, 20% of the class academically.
But they're good with their hands.
You can't, by law, my understanding is, we can't put in programs that compete with Blackstone.
No, you can't. You've got to find stuff they don't have, other schools don't have, but it's tough when everybody has almost all the same stuff now. Maybe more with the hospital, work with them more, stuff like that, go in that field. There's always something out there. You've got to find it.
Nothing comes to mind though, huh?
No. It's hard when everybody else has everything too.
I mean, and some of it literally is. I've heard parents say that we're going to a Hope Dale because we want our child to have smaller classes, not classrooms.
Not a lot of kids in the class.
We have 260 graduating-- You know, as seniors, Hope Dale, I think, may have 80. So it is a different environment, a much--
Smaller environment.
Smaller.
Probably less pressure and that's probably--
I don't know. That, that I can't tell you.
Maybe that's what they look at.
What do you think overall about the schools? Do we have a good school system?
I believe so. Always could be better. I believe they did a good job. Trump has done a good job. Some people say something, some would say different. I think he did fine. It's like every other business. It's a business too, a school. The kids come first. You've got to protect those kids too.
I mean, to me, the ultimate judge is not you, me, or the school administration. I mean, I've always said, the high school is supposed to get our kids ready for their next adventure in life, many of them college.
Yes.
And I see that my daughters got into every school they wanted to apply to. And they weren't little, you know, hootenanny community college. These were the--
The top ones.
And they get in.
That's one good thing we have. A lot of the students, they get in those top colleges around the country, and I'm proud of that. A lot of SMAC kids in that school system. They make it and they get to the big colleges, but a lot of them, a lot of them get there. There's a lot of them that make it.
So isn't that telling us that the colleges think we've got a pretty good school system?
Yes, we do.
Because if, you know, if they wouldn't take our kids--
No, if they weren't good enough. They know.
You know, I got involved in Holy Cross and they had nine top students to choose from for every seat in the class. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Especially at $64,000, which is ridiculous.
They aren't cheap in that school.
None of the schools are.
Nope. They all go up too because they have to too.
Yeah, that's always a debate on when they're going up twice and three times inflation every year. Isn't there something they can do?
I'm sure they can, but they want the buck too because they're teaching the, your kids.
But you know, you turn around and say, "How do these kids make it?" You know, when we came out of school, I mean, I was very fortunate that my parents paid for my education. But I came out of school with $38.20 in my pocket. That was my net worth. You know, when you turn around and say, "Okay, I need to buy a car. I need to go live somewhere. So I'm either going to pay some silly amount of rent--
Find a job, pay for the car, pay for the--
Yeah, but now, if you're coming out of school with a $100,000--
Education.
--school loan. How the heck can you afford? It's not like you're going to walk out and get 100, $200,000 a year job your first year. How do these kids afford a car, a house?
I don't know. They do. Some of their parents probably buy it for them, but some do though. I'm like, wow, they're doing good.
We talk a lot about making changes. I've heard from the school committee, a lot of great ideas that have some pretty substantial price tags. You know, we heard we're losing, we get good people as aides, we train them, we get them the experience, and then they bolt.
They go to other school districts, make, make the money. That's what.
But now--
I don't believe--
Can we afford to give the aides $10,000, $20,000 a year increases?
I don't know. That's a tough one. If you want to keep them, you might have to, but I don't know. I don't think you can afford it.
Well, but if you take an aide and you give them that kind of an increase, don't you think the teachers are going to say, "Wait a minute, what about, are we the, are we chopped liver here?"
They want to raise too.
So how do you, how do you balance that? What do you do? Because you're going to be, if you're a school committee, you're going to be right in the middle--
Of a war, maybe.
--of a very hard decision.
I don't know if I go along with that one. It'd be a tough one. I'm sure they deserve it, but if the money's not there, you can't.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's questioning whether or not they deserve it. You know, somebody making $100 a day, you know, you turn around and say, "It's kind of frightening that I could go down to McDonald's and make almost the same money. And I really don't have as much responsibility as if I'm taking care of your kids."
Yeah, that's true.
You know, but on the other hand, you know, we run into this all the time where, you know, the teachers, they're, I mean, they've got unreasonable kids just like mine who want to eat every day.
Yes, they do.
And they want clothes.
They got it. They need their money to support it.
So, you know, they need to make a wage, but if our overall revenue doesn't go up and teacher salaries keep going up, and, you know, you look at the medical benefits and all that keeps going up--
It goes up every year.
What do you do?
Tough questions. I would look at it real open. Might have to make tough decisions. Layoffs, it does happen. It's hard to do it, but you have to do it sometimes. Everything keeps going up, you don't got the money to pay for it. You have to do something somewhere.
Another question came up about busing kids that live within two miles. Thoughts?
Well, if they're the younger kids, I could see it. They shouldn't be walking. I walked when I went to Brookside, two miles away back in the day, but it was nothing like today. Today's a little more different today. But if they can afford it, the buses and everything, I say, yeah, you can bust the smaller kids. I'm fine with that.
I think kindergarten kids get busted anyway.
Yes, they do. I think I know that--
You're not going to have the little kindergarten kids walking.
They talk about the first, second, the ones that--
Third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade.
I can see their point. Safety. You've got to have safety for them.
But again, if the budget is fixed and you say, "Okay, it's going to cost 200, 300 to do within two miles, 600,000 extra to do within zero miles, you know, basically everybody." So, any, I mean, any idea what you'd take out of the budget to make up for this?
Something, if they want that, something, they have to cut something. I'm not sure what. Then again, maybe just don't do it for now and wait and see how it happens down the road. You never know. Maybe the state will get good again, get more grants for the school system, get a grant, go that way.
But you couldn't do this on a grant, could you?
No, because it only would last so long.
Because you're really setting yourself up like all-day kindergarten.
Yep.
Let's say we got a $300,000 grant. Yay! For three years.
Do it for three years, then like, oh.
So the kid's been being busted in second, third, fourth grade, now it's fifth grade, and you say, "Sorry."
Got to walk. The grant's gone. I'm like, hmm, maybe it was a waste of time first off?
I don't know.
I don't know. It's a tough one. I'm for the kids' safety, but we have to see. If the money's not there, you can't do it. It's hard sometimes, but it's like everything. You have to make tough calls a lot.
What are your thoughts on Milford's testing scores?
Yeah, bad. Obviously be better. They do pretty good FID around the other towns. Like we said, a lot of the kids get top colleges here, so that something's going on right.
But when you look at the average number, Milford's average is not as good as some of the surrounding towns. And people get upset. I mean, when Dr. Barardi was here, he had come to the FinCom and said, "You give me a million dollars. I'll put in all these new programs and our scores will significantly increase." How do you say no?
Can't.
"We found a million dollars. Put it in the general..." So it's not a million. It's a million every year now for a dozen years, but the scores haven't gone up.
There's something--
Now, I remember when we were in, my daughter was in eighth grade, and Tommy Daverin was the principal. Boy, I loved Tommy. He was just such a straight shooter. He didn't get any candy coating, but if you could deal with that, you realize that he was no nonsense. Those kids in his mind were his, you know, for those hours of the day, and he ran that place to make sure the kids got the best education they could. But I asked him once, I said, "Tommy, why do your scores suck?" I knew I'd get a reaction. And he looked at me and he says, "Because you're ignorant." I said, "I am?" He goes, "Yes, you haven't looked at the scores." He says, "Do you realize we have a bimodal distribution?" And I said, "No, I assume a Gaussian curve." You know, it's a nice smooth Gaussian. He says, "No, we have two. The top kids do as well or better than any kids in this area. But we have a lot of kids who come to this country for the first time, don't really speak English."
Nope.
And they don't do so well.
Nope. That's why I think, that's why a lot of the scores aren't there. People get mad, but they don't realize--
So if you average the two, it looks like we're not doing so well. But if you looked at it, you know, and you saw the two Gaussian curves, I just wonder if that's the, I would imagine it's still there.
I'm sure it is. It has to be getting better though because they've learned and--
We had a big bruhaha over ELL. Had a town meeting member get up. And say, the FinCom, and I was one of them. Is advocating for adding three hundred thousand dollars. Above the normal school budget. To take care of the English language learners, you know, basically the kids coming in to Milford who don't speak English or are very limited. And I remember him saying that if you put this money in, you're just gonna bring more kids here. Do you believe that?
No, I don't.
Especially when you look at the data. Because the ELL programs are mandated.
Yes, they are.
The special needs programs are mandated.
They need them.
So if you start with a hundred dollars worth of, or you know, forty-three million dollars back then, but, you know, whatever it is. Of operational expenses. You take out what you need for special needs, you take out what you need for ELL. And then the rest goes to the typical kids.
Yep.
So if you take three hundred thousand dollars out of the budget. Or add in three hundred thousand of expense. You're not gonna take it out of the special needs kids.
No.
You can't.
You can't.
You shouldn't, but forget shouldn't, by law, you can't.
You can't touch it.
You can't touch it on ELL.
Nope.
So what you're really doing is taking it out of the kids that you think you're protecting.
Yeah.
How do you feel about the kids coming in? I mean, people are saying they're illegal.
It's a tough call, I hear everything lately, but they're kids though, I don't blame the kids, I'm sorry, I don't. They're only kids. You have to take care of them.
But I got a kick out of when they said, the federal government put them here, they, they put these illegal alien children here.
I don't know about that.
Well, wait a minute, if the federal government put them here. Then they're legal.
Yep.
Right?
I remember that, it was on the news and stuff, I'm like, eh, I can't believe everything's on the news either, cause they're like the, you know.
No, sure, but you know, you turn around and you say. Once they're in Milford.
They're our kids.
They're, they're our kids, they bleed Milford red.
Not a lot of people, we had that conversation last year too, I'm like, it's our kids, and they get mad, so hey, it's. I'm not gonna kick a kid out, they, they're only kids.
You can't.
We gotta teach them.
By federal law, once the feds have put, you know, the Texas kids that, here.
I remember, you gotta take care of them, they're yours.
They're yours.
And you're gonna take care of them.
And you know, I've always. I get grief for saying, you know, I've never. Needed somebody, and I've always believed that Milford as a town, we don't need somebody from Boston or from Washington. To tell us what's right and how we take care of our kids.
True.
We've always, town meeting's always been great.
Yes, they have.
We get the growling, the snarling, and you're like.
That's part of it, part of the process, that's how stuff gets done.
They have to vet it. But then you turn around and say. What are they gonna do? And somehow they always come out on the right side.
Yep, that's fine if they grow, that's how the process works, you have to get it out there and. I'm fine.
What do you think the most successful programs are in the school?
Uh, let's see, the community use program. Probably the music programs, I saw a thing, they're, a bunch of them got top honors. Uh, what's there, three of them?
No, but just in general. You know, if you looked at the school system and you said, what do you feel the strongest about?
The strongest one, the kids that are getting picked to the top colleges, that's probably the number one one.
So the academic programs?
They do well. I'm impressed, a lot of the smart, some of these kids, they get to the top colleges, I'm like, we're doing something right. Even though they all say, oh, the scores are down, but we're doing something right, the kids are getting picked.
Yeah, and to me, that's the ultimate judge. You know, if, I can't think of anything worse. Than having your child go through school. And then being denied. All the colleges.
Yep.
I mean, we were lucky, my Emily only applied to one school. She made up her mind, she was going to Holy Cross. She only applied to Holy Cross, and we were like having a heart attack, saying, if she doesn't get in, what are we gonna do?
Yep.
But you know. Lexi applied to seven different schools and got in. I can't imagine. What I would think of the good Dr. Tremblay and the staff if all seven said no.
They're doing their job, doing something right.
They can't be doing it all wrong if.
No.
They got, my daughter's in. You know, and you can say, oh, it was the kid, it was the fam, yeah, but.
No.
Women, by the time we rolled to high school. I was lucky to get two hours a day with my kids. I know it's terrible, but, you know, they get home and zing, they're gone.
Sports, they got all that to do.
I mean, you know, you go and you get to watch them play sports, you get to watch them do activities. But I'm not interacting with them like when they were small.
No.
But those high school teachers.
They're with them.
They're with them six, eight hours a day, the coaches, the teachers, everything.
Teaching them, they're making them who they are today, so you gotta give credit where credit's due. I do, I see it.
Anything you think you'd add? Anything that would come to mind, I mean, you turn around and you say, hey, maybe if I added some music, some arts, but. Anything specific you could think of?
More, you know, more, uh. Hospitality courses or something like that, that's the way it looks like they're going.
Yeah.
As Dr. Tremblay started, I think they should keep going that way. It helps, it's trade, for now, until you can find something else out there that will work. It helps though, cause you get the hospital, they're helping out, all the businesses, big ones around here helping. And there's others, probably stuff down the road they can find. That, maybe more music, arts, cause that helps too, gets kids to learn.
How do, how do you think we do as far as what we invest in the sports for the kids?
Very well. They're always going to championships a lot. Well, there, some years they are, hey, that's, that's the way the process works. But we have a lot of good athletes, a lot of wads, I see it. Some big stars came out of the school, too.
Yeah.
Oh, they do good.
Think we were investing enough in the facilities and all?
Probably do more, if it needs it, I think they're doing good right now.
We always need more fields.
That's number one, I know they've been looking and looking for years here and they haven't found a spot yet. You need more fields, that's true.
But you always need more fields.
Yep, the sports keeps growing, more of the younger kids wanna keep playing this and that, and you ha, you need the field for them.
What do you think about it when we were kids? You got home, you grabbed a bat ball and the glove.
Go in the backyard, go down to the little town park.
Town park, you'd walk to the town park.
Get all the neighborhood kids, you play, play, get dirty, have fun.
But you can't do that today, I mean, it seems like everything now is totally organized and, and leagues for everything.
Yep. Times changed.
You know, a lot of times. You know, when I first put my children in the school. I looked at Jose Villar, I said, you know. I believe your job is to educate my children, not to raise them. So if anything happens and they don't behave. Feel free to call me. Do you think it's changed since we were kids?
Yep, yeah, it has.
How so?
Well, the kids today, they get, well, they get the computers, everything today, I didn't have that back then, they just started coming out back then. Now today, I can't live on my phone either, that is what it is today, that's the way social, everything's going.
But are we expecting more out of our teachers than our parents did?
Some maybe, I don't, I don't really see it, they still do their job, they're doing a good job, in my opinion. They do what they can do.
No, I understand, but it seems like we're putting more and more of the burden.
On them.
Of raising the children. I mean.
That's true.
I had an inflection point in my view, it was at Woodland School, I happened to be in the principal's office, going over a program. And a little fourth grader apparently. Indicated with a gesture that he thought his teacher was number one. And then when the teacher didn't appreciate it. Explained what that. Single finger in the air meant. They called the mother. If I hadn't seen it, I wouldn't have believed when I heard the mother come screaming in, saying, what did you do to antagonize my child? I think if I ever flipped off a teacher and told a teacher to F off in the middle of a class. Now, my sainted father never touched me, you know, a swat on the bum, but he never, I think he would've taken a two by four and killed me.
Yep, he didn't do that back then, I didn't either.
He was scared to death. You know, you think about it, when you screwed up in school, it's, put me in detention, I'll do anything, but don't call my parents.
Yep.
You know, please don't call my father, cause in his opinion, when I, if I did something less than intelligent, I was embarrassing the family. Do you think that's changed now?
Yeah, it has. I see it.
So what do you do? How do you talk to the teachers to say, we're putting this extra burden on you?
Do your best, maybe, I see it though, it's hard. Times changed. Back till I was in school and you, today it's different, I don't know what it is, everything's changed. Society maybe changed, as it went through the years, probably.
Well, the family structure's changed, cause you have a lot more. I mean, if you think about it. I don't, I think I knew one of my friends who had a divorced family. You know, where mom and dad weren't home every night for them. Today, being married a hundred years, I feel like the dinosaur. You know, when people look at you and, you know, a lot of people have thirty-six years worth of marriage, but. It's cumulative, it's not all in one family unit.
Yep. Today, a lot of them divorced parents, remarried, I see it, it's a lot of it, that happens today. And a lot of the burden's on the kids.
How do we tell the teachers? That we expect them to live with this?
Do your best. Just hold it in, do your best, and they do their good job doing it.
Now, a lot of concern comes out. About security in the school.
That's a number one priority.
What are your thoughts on how secure are our schools?
Well, they're good right now, but I don't think they're that good, they still can get in. Yeah, you gotta buzz each way in, but they can sneak in, they have a big program, they can sneak in there. Lot of stuff happens at this day and age now, you gotta find more ways to protect those kids.
But how do you protect, I mean, I've always said, there's no way. I will ever be able to understand, you know, when people say, how did he do that, go into an elementary school and. Cut down little kids. To me, the only way you could understand is if your mind was as sick.
Yep.
As the shooter. Cause I can't imagine. How you would hurt. A little kid. But what do you do? Guy's got an AK-47 or, you know, pistols. And you can shoot his way in, how do you stop that?
Security. The security guards at the door that make sure, really make sure.
But think of the high school. How many security guards would you really need?
A lot, and I don't think I got the money to afford it.
Here we go again.
That's where it's hard, and people ask me all the time, you gotta protect the kids, like it's. It's hard, they need the money.
And you're always gonna have the argument, okay, do I hire two security guards or two new teachers?
True.
You know, those programs you talk about, hey, I'd love to put more programs in.
They need the teachers.
But then I need the staff.
Yep.
But if I'm gonna cut staff. You know. It always seems to me that all you can do. Is secure the buildings as best you can.
Best you can.
And it's kind of like rodent control, you, you, the best you can do is chase them away and hope they go somewhere else. I mean, you pray that they don't go anywhere. But.
True.
You know, we can't look outside the center of the universe.
Nope.
We've got our schools and.
You gotta live. Life goes on, you gotta live, just hope it doesn't happen.
We're just getting Woodland online. And you know, we brought up the fact that. For the next two, three years. We're gonna have to really hunker down.
Yes, we have.
Problem becomes. The needs, people still want to put new programs in place and do more things. So, what do you tell people? I mean, it's hard to.
Say no, but you gotta pay off that debt, that's a sixty million dollar school.
Yeah, thirty-four million dollars right out of our, that was our share.
Yeah. You gotta make sure, get it paid off then, yeah, sure, you wanna get new programs, that's what you got, let's try to do it.
You know, you look at some of the surrounding towns. You live next door and you get your normal bill, and then you got a five hundred dollar debt exclusion for high school. It's a lot of money for people.
Yes, it is.
You know, to get a five hundred dollar surprise, and you're gonna get this nice surprise for twenty years. You know, we're looking at. Doing it within our own budget.
Yep.
No override, we don't use profanity. Uh, to me, two and a half and over, you know, a debt exclusion, a profane.
We find ways to do it, we do a good job at it too.
What do you think the next project is gonna be? Besides doing something with Middle School East? If you took that off the table and you looked around and said. If I could pick one. School-related building, field, something.
I know.
Where would it be?
High school. That's a building that hasn't been touched in many years, I'm sure it could use an upgrade. Expansion, most likely, it's time, I think, for that. Cause classrooms aren't getting any smaller, even though, yeah, we're losing kids, but more kids are keep coming in too.
But now you look at the high school, Franklin just spent a hundred million do, now, forget Newton South.
That was something, that one.
What a school. I mean, we go there, my son-in-law coaches special needs basketball, so every year we go there for the, you know, the finals.
Tournament.
The tournament, oh my god. The school is unbelie, the only thing is. Being on the FinCom, I'm looking, saying, oh, when the warranties run out, what is it gonna cost to maintain this place?
I remember that school coming on, like, wow, it's a lot of money.
Two hundred million dollars.
I'm hoping they get the best education there, that's a good, that's a lot of money for a school, couldn't afford it here, no way.
What would you do with the high school though? You're not gonna raise it and start again.
I wouldn't raise it, you just do what you can with it, add on, fix up some areas that need to be fixed, and add more classrooms. Go that way too, if you can't do nothing with Middle School East. Then look, probably the other thing, look for more fields. Cause you're gonna need them, I know they're looking now, but you're still gonna need fields, there's a lot of sports.
Well, we've had the discussion for two years. I mean, the Parks Department, they're Milford people.
Yep.
Even though Mike lives in Hopkien, he's Milford people, they understood that when we sank five million dollars into the youth center. The odds on coming up with a couple million dollars more for another field are gonna get slimmer. But we talked about, and for the last two years, we've put away two hundred thousand dollars a year. To re-turf a field. Cause realistically, you don't save any money with a turf field, we've gone through the data. You really don't, because. You talk about having to re-sod fields, you never do.
No.
So you do save money against the theoretical. But, you know, they said, we should sod the high school field every other year, how often do we do it? Every six? Oh. So when you really look at the numbers, I could never find that we saved any money, cause you gotta groom it, and every so many years, you gotta re-carpet it. But you do get two and a half fields worth of use. When it rains, that water drains right away.
And you can play.
And you can play, I mean, how many Saturday or Sunday games we had canceled? Cause the fields were soaking wet, and if you went out there and played, you'd rip them to shreds.
No, the one I would see probably, Fino Field, the annex, the big one, with a Legion play. You could do that one. Turf. Then down the road, we do another one.
And that, that almost seems like a more reasonable approach.
Slowly do them, slowly, every few years, and you'll be good.
Cause we did that with the Fino Field Lights, if you remember, back then, a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars was too much for any one year. So we put money away for three, four years in a row.
More than once.
Then all of a sudden, okay, we got the money. You know, and the FinCom's been working with, um, the Long Range Capital Subcommittee's been working with Mike Brishani and Braz and the crew. Saying, guys, it could take us three or four years. And we gotta have surpluses to do it.
Yep.
But so far, two years running, we put two hundred thousand a year away. So we're halfway to where we can go and tell the Parks Department, now go fight the political battle.
Yep.
You know, whether it's Fino Field.
A town park.
Town park.
That's a big use too.
Whether it's.
Rosenthal.
Practice field, don't really care. The only one we know you cannot do is the dump, Plains Park.
You can't touch it, you gotta leave that.
Cause it settles.
Yep, you gotta leave that.
They've told us, there's no way you can turf that, cause you, it'll get ruined.
Yep. You can't touch that one, all the others you can do, and it's probably a better way to do it too, cheaper way out. And there's probably a better way to do it, too. Cheaper way out.
Another hot topic comes up is how much we spend on our special needs programs. Because there's a minimum that you have to.
Yep.
Milford's always gone above and beyond with the Special Olympics and all the programs. What are your thoughts on that?
They spend good. I always spend more. Those kids deserve it, too. Jen Walsh does a good job up there. Great job. I know plenty of people that came through there. I see it. Those are great. You gotta help them. You can't cut that. No way. I would never do that. Give them more if you can do it, because they, those kids are pretty smart, too. There's a real smart kids that come out of there.
Well, it's not just the smart kids. I've never met a group of parents that were so appreciative of everything you did for them. You know, it's amazing, because I was scared to death to coach Special Olympic soccer, because I didn't know what to do. Jen Walsh got me involved, and it was amazing. I mean, I was blessed that my normal soccer teams for fourteen years that I coached, I had a ball with. But if the kids weren't doing what you were asking, it wasn't out of rebellion.
No.
It's they didn't understand.
Yep.
You know, when you talk to the parents, they were the first ones to say, you know, we really want this, but we understand if you can't.
That's good.
Even my parent, you know, my other team's parents weren't that good. So, you know, I can't think of a group of kids who, in my mind, deserve more than we ever give them.
True.
But what do you say to people when they say, well, you keep putting these programs in, you're bringing kids from other towns into Milford?
I don't know. Some people, they just don't like the hair, see it. It's hard to make everybody happy.
Yeah, well, you know, something's.
Reality, though, some of those programs we need, though.
But, you know, if the worst thing, when the day comes, and hopefully the long bus ride is north, not south.
Yep.
And you're standing up in front of the gates, if the worst thing I did is help out some kids from another town while we're taking care of our own, something tells me I think I can live with that.
I could live with that.
You know, and if anybody's been involved in the special needs programs, when you meet these kids, you can't help but want to help them.
Yes, true.
Any areas you, we haven't touched on?
No, I think we touched on pretty much everything.
So we come down near the end of the show, and here's your chance for a prepaid free commercial. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Now, I'm hardworking, dedicated. I'm on the Verena Road Board of Trustees. Town meeting member, was an electric constable, all that experience. And being a town resident, living here, seeing firsthand the day-to-day operations, I believe I'll be the best candidate for the job, because I'm hardworking. Sometimes you ain't gonna agree, but you disagree to agree, you get stuff done. That's how it works. And I appreciate your vote on April fifth.
And as always, I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate, but I'll beg you, on April fifth, get out there, vote. Get to know these candidates. I mean, all of them are special, because they're standing up. They're not the people complaining that things ought to be better and just complaining about it. We have a number of candidates this year, we have three, who have said they wanna get up and help our kids. They wanna do something to make the center of the universe a little bit better. You know, and if nothing else, pick one, you know, hopefully, there's enough debates, you know, between Candidates Night, which we'll have on this show, the debate that the TV station, the Milford TV station will hold, the radio will most likely have one. Senior Center will have one. So there's.
Citizens of Milford.
Citizens of Milford, you know, John Seaver and Steve Tredle's group will have one. So even if you can't watch fifty minutes or forty minutes, I mean, I wouldn't wanna watch me for fifty-eight minutes. I'd get bored, too. But if you can do five, ten minutes here and there, I know all of March, that Milford Show and Political Review will be dedicated to these one-on-ones and the Candidates Nights. So that way, if you have five or ten minutes that you can put up with an old man and learn about a candidate, please do so. Get to know, especially if you have children, then you wanna know who's setting policy. And the fallacy is people say, I don't have kids, so I don't really care. Actually, you do. Because the quality of our school system is gonna affect directly the largest investment you have. At least, most people, is their home. If people don't see a good school system, they don't flock to your town. So as always, good night to our six loyal viewers. Hopefully, we'll get a couple more because of the elections and people who care about how the town is run by the selectmen and how the school committee sets policies. We'll get a couple more watching. But God bless. May tomorrow be a better day than today. Good night.